So we'll call this evening's special session order, May 6th at 6:30 PM. City Council Special Session. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Yes, Councilmember Rallo.
Here.
Volin?
Here.
Rosenbarger?
Here.
Scamblerie?
Here.
Sims?
Here.
Flaherty?
Here.
Piedmont Smith? Okay, Smith?
I'm here, sorry.
Okay.
I'm here as well.
Thank you. Anne Sandberg?
Here.
Okay, thank you. A quick agenda summation. We will continue deliberations on ordinance 21-23, which is to amend Title 20 of the Unified Development Ordinance of the Bloomington Municipal Code regarding regulations related to dwelling duplex, dwelling triplex, and dwelling fourplex set forth in Bloomington Municipal Code 20.03 and 20.04. If we are able to get through that, then we will move on to ordinance 21-24, which is to repeal and replace the official zoning map within the, within Title 20 of the Bloomington Municipal Code entitled Unified Development Ordinance. I think we may discuss matters pertaining to council schedule. And then we will adjourn if we can finish our business and we will recess if we have not. I will read a note, "The council anticipates deliberating on ordinance 21-23 and ordinance 21-24 and any amendments thereto over the course of multiple nights currently scheduled for last Tuesday, Wednesday, and tonight Thursday. At the conclusion of each night and until the council has concluded its deliberations on these items, it may recess rather than adjourn the special session. And any business not completed on a given night may be continued until the following scheduled time." I would also repeat our conduct of deliberations as we agreed upon on our first night Tuesday. And that is that public comment will be limited to three minutes. Councilmember debate will be limited to the same three minutes. If we are still in the process of meeting at 11:00 PM, I will entertain a recess, a motion to recess, and then we'll schedule a continuation of special session. And without saying brevity is always appreciated. I will also mention, I'm sorry. With ordinance 21-23, we've already entertained Amendment 1, which failed 4 to 5. And we entertained, or I'm sorry, deliberated Amendment 02, which was adopted 9-0. And as of tonight, I do believe we have more ordinances, I'm sorry, amendments to be entertained. And we will start with ordinance 3 if the authors are ready or sponsors are ready.
Yeah, so I'd like to move Amendment 3 to ordinance 21-23.
Second.
This.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is sponsored by Councilmember Sandberg and I. We submit Amendment 3 attached to ordinance 21-23 as attachment A 00921. Amended as follows, there are two components essentially to this amendment. That is, the first is upon conditional approval in the R1, R2, and R3 districts, 150-foot buffer is established around the duplex that precludes another duplex within that zone for two years. The second component of the amendment is a cap on the number. The number is 15 duplex dwellings per year. The first component is revived from what was proposed prior to the Plan Commission review last month. It is a buffer on essentially concentrating this form to maintain housing diversity in neighborhoods. Preventing a monoculture of duplexes within a 150-foot buffer. The second amendment of, component of this amendment of Amendment 3, the cap is, functions as a governor on the rate in which these forms occur. Councilmember Sandberg and I recognize that we don't know. No one in fact knows the outcome of eliminating single-family zoning in all residential districts. Permitting duplexes in R1, R2, and R3 districts comes with hazards, as has been noted by us and other council members and the public. We recognize that as an experiment, this zoning deregulation presents very lucrative returns on investment for conversions from single-family homes to duplexes for market rentals. And so we support parameters on this experiment, guardrails, to prevent too many that may have an adverse effect on neighborhoods, but enough to align with expectations expressed by planning. So we originally chose, and it appeared yesterday, in yesterday's packets, 10, 10 per year. But after discussion with Council President Sims and with the Director of Planning Transportation, Scott Robinson, we settled on 15 duplexes per year. This gives us a process that allows duplexes to be created with interference and will provide us with data every year and location, the rate and use of the plexes. So I'll turn now to Councilmember Sandberg if she has anything more to add on the introduction.
Thank you, Councilmember Rallo. And I have really nothing more to add other than after listening to our very engaged and very passionate public, we do advise to go slowly and cautiously. This is a change. This is a major change in our housing policy. And therefore, we feel that it is important to have the caps. It is important to have the buffer so that we can monitor this very carefully and make decisions accordingly as we move forward. But we feel this is a good safeguard measure that has been asked for by the public, by a vast majority of the members of our public. And so therefore, we hope that the rest of council will support this as a modest and a moderating amendment. And with that, I will close my comments and I believe we will see if staff has anything further to add.
Good evening. Jackie Scanlon Development Services Manager. Regarding Amendment 3, yes, we are fine with the separation time and time limit that matches that that went to the Plan Commission from staff. Regarding the cap, we don't necessarily think that a cap is necessary. If the main concern is too many duplexes in the historic neighborhoods where the lots are smaller, the separation requirement effectively creates a cap in those areas. But we aren't vehemently opposed to one. We understand that that helps address some concerns. We just don't think one is necessary. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scanlon. We will now go to council members for questions of the authors or sponsors of this amendment, Amendment 03 of ordinance 21-23. Councilmember Flaherty?
Yeah, thank you to the amendment sponsors and staff for weighing in. Is my understanding correct that the buffer requirement would not interact with existing duplexes, triplexes, other small-scale attached housing that's already in neighborhoods? It's only for new or convert, or new build or a converted or, I guess maybe speak to the word expanded. I think that's in there too, but just to better understand exactly how this applies. Either one.
Yes. Ms. Scanlon, do you want to?
Sorry, yes, yes is the answer. I just wasn't sure if it was directed at me. Thank you.
Okay, specifically the word expanded, like what if someone has a duplex that's, you know, a non-conforming existing use now and they add a bedroom to it? That would then fall into this category, is that right?
Sure, yes. So if you have a lawful, non-conforming duplex now, if this code goes through as we, as presented now, you will still remain lawful, non-conforming. If you want to expand, add a bedroom, or habitable space, you would have to go through the conditional use process. So then you become part of those that are regulated in this way.
Okay, so all property, and all properties then remain lawful, non-conforming?
Correct.
Even if they would meet code until they choose to?
Until they choose to, yeah, until they choose to seek the conditional use.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes, I wonder if the sponsors could tell me how the number 15 as a cap was arrived at?
Sure. Pardon me. The, the number was was derived in part because of comments that Ms. Scanlon made during the introduction of the ordinance. She mentioned that if 20 were to occur in the first year, that they would be back at council. And, and so that seemed to be sort of a a rough estimate of maybe approaching excess per year. And then, you know, clearly the proponents would like, they have an estimate that at least some number between 0 and 20 are going to occur. So we picked a moderate number. And then the original case, it was 10. But President Sims made a good case that perhaps we should increase it. And after speaking with Scott Robinson, he concurred that that was acceptable. So that's how the number was arrived.
Thank you. Is Mr. Robinson here to, or Ms. Scanlon, can you comment? It seems like the number was run by staff, so was run past the staff.
I'm able to speak, although I don't know if my camera is working, Councilmember Piedmont Smith? Okay, sorry. Yes, the number was suggested and we discussed it a little bit. Basically, one of the things that I looked to was the caseload that BZA hears.
Mr. Robinson, I'm sorry, I hate to disturb you, but can you identify yourself, please?
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Sims.
That's okay.
Scott Robinson, Director of Planning and Transportation. As I was saying, one of the things that I looked at, asked staff, is to kind of look at an annual caseload of the Board of Zoning Appeals. Typically, they don't hear more than five cases per month, so about 60 a year. And so I think a reasonable kind of capacity from a staff perspective in filing, you know, they could add, you know, maybe two cases a month or 24 additional cases if this amendment would pass. So that would probably be a reasonable expectation, maybe the high end. And so that's where, that's a number I kind of started out with, was 24. Again, just through conversation, and it seemed like 15 is a middle point. But again, that's, I'd be happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you.
Okay, we have Andy. Councilmember Scamblerie?
Yes, thank you. I have a similar question regarding the buffer. One of the things that's always kind of struck me about that is that 150 feet or any specific amount doesn't mean the same thing in every neighborhood. It means something different in Fritz Terrace than it does in Elm Heights and it does in Waterman. And I'm, I'm wondering, and I don't know if this is for Ms. Scanlon or Mr. Robinson, but I'm concerned that 150 feet may not adequately serve all the neighborhoods well as a buffer. And I'm wondering what your thoughts are on that.
Sure. So we've discussed this a little bit before, but the, we did discuss having potentially different, different widths for different districts based on average lot width, for example. We decided to go with 150 across the board as a distance where you would maybe be interested or disturbed by something that your neighbor is doing within that distance. So in the historic neighborhoods, that's going to be more neighbors. You're going to have more neighbors within 150 feet than you are, for example, in Park Ridge East. But, but physically, you know, the distance of those neighbors is the same. So we just, what we kind of determined was that we used that standard as, as I said, that that is a distance where we think the effects of what's happening within that area could be detrimental to you or have an effect on your property and that you would be interested to know what's happening there. And so by using that kind of logic, we do understand that that means something different in the near west side than it does, again, in Park Ridge East. But if you have six neighbors within 150 feet in the near west side, we do think that that is an area that's appropriate to, to know what's going on there. And that by using that, that buffer, then that kind of spreads out this use that people are worried about. So for example, if you live in the near west side and your neighbor, three houses down on your east, and your neighbor, three houses down on your west are switching over to a use you're worried about, that's probably going to have a different effect on you than if you're in Hoosier Acres and your neighbor, three properties to the east and three properties to the west switch over. Because they're so much farther away from you, the effect of a change of use on their property is affecting you differently. And so that's why we decided to use the same across the board.
And if, if, let's say the next nearest home or the next nearest residence is more than 150 feet away, does at least one, one continue as property?
Yes. So it's not houses, it's properties. So it would be all the properties touching you. So it's not just those on your side of the street. It's completely surrounding you in a circle.
Thank you for clarifying. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Scamblerie. Councilmember Volin?
Yes, thank you. Ms. Scanlon, you said in earlier presentations, you talked about how many petitions have been filed since the UDO was passed. First of all, it was adopted in April of 2020, is that right?
Correct, yes. That's when it became effective. It was adopted, it was adopted in December of 19.
So you say, you said something about the number of development petitions that were filed was very low. Could you, could you reiterate that statement?
I think what I said, so correct me if I'm wrong. When we were talking about the number of development petitions since then, what I was, I think it was in the context of requests for duplexes in areas where they were now allowed, where DUEs weren't an issue because they're not in the new code. Is that what you're referencing?
Yeah.
Yeah. So in the new code, which has been effective since April of last year, we changed the way we talk about, we don't talk about density with dwelling unit equivalents anymore. So in districts where duplexes are now allowed in the use table, so for example, in our mixed-use medium scale residential multifamily, for, for example, two districts, a number of properties that are single-family now became eligible to become duplexes. And they don't, they didn't have to meet DUE requirements anymore, which arguably could have been why they weren't trying to flip over to multifamily in the past. And we have 178 of those at our most conservative estimate. And none of them, we haven't heard any requests to have that done thus far. And I think part of bringing that up initially, when the point was that those areas aren't outlying. They're in some of our older neighborhoods, like just north of downtown or along Hillside surrounding Bryant Park, that those single-family houses have similar attractive characteristics to those in many of our historic neighborhoods.
Thank you for that. Mr. President, if you don't mind, may I share a screen to show a couple of images?
If it fits with, I'm sorry, say that again.
I like to show some images to, because I have a follow-up question based on Ms. Scanlon's answer.
Yes, sir.
Can everyone see the screen?
No. Yes.
Okay. So, you know, what Ms. Scanlon is saying is that there have been no efforts to convert houses that could have been plexes by now since last year. This is the district part of the district I represent. You see at the bottom, Old Northeast, most of the RM there. High Point and Garden Hill, then north of 17th Street, you see an area that's mostly been designated mixed-use student housing. So these areas are residential high density, and this area here is residential multifamily. All right. There are lots of single-family houses still in these areas. Here is the allowed use table, and you'll see that both RM and RH allow duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes, and multifamily by right permitted use in RM and RH. So if this is the case, you know, they, they've been allowed since April 2020. Now, if there's any doubt about single-family housing here, let me show you a few pictures. These are all, this is the 1,300 block of North Lincoln. These are all houses with one mailbox in front, single-family zoning. Here you have another couple. That tree is unfortunately blocking a nice little single-family house on East Cottage Grove. Here is a favorite memory of mine, the corner of Harold and Alice. Nice little house here, single-family house. Here's a couple more on North Dunn. Here's a couple more on North Grant. All right. These are all houses that by the, the arguments that have been made by people opposed to plexes, should have been flipped by now, should have become duplexes. Because if it's true that the housing market is on fire, developers can't wait to convert single-family houses into plexes. Property owners are savvy and they know city code. The UDO has been in place for over a year. The new UDO allows plexes and multifamily in both RM and RH, then there should already be new plexes in the city, but there have been zero. Ms. Scanlon just said there have been zero plexes approved or changed. There are zero in the pipeline. So I guess my question, and I'll, I'll stop sharing screen now. Okay, I thought I stopped. My question is to the sponsors is where are the plexes? Why, why aren't they here now if this is such an urgent problem? This is for both Councilmember Sandberg and Rallo.
Well, I would say that you picked one geographic location firstly. The second is that we have been living in extraordinary times since January 2020 with a pandemic. And I guess what I read in your point is that we picked an appropriate number. Because if plexes were to occur, they would certainly be either between 0 and 15, probably not more. So this is just the safeguard. We don't know. We really don't know. We're extending the allowance of plexes now everywhere. So because no one can actually predict, you've taken a tiny geographic area and said they haven't occurred.
Hold it, hold it. These are zones. And I'm sorry, I want to make this point.
Now, Councilmember Volin, let him finish answering your question.
Well, you know, he asked me a question and I was replying, so go ahead.
Are you finished?
Well, I will.
Go ahead.
Apparently, yeah.
Mr. Rallo, these are areas that, that everyone considers student housing. The vast majority of that area is student housing. Old Northeast, Garden Hill, north of 17th Street, okay? There's no one who's going to object to any of these houses becoming duplex. Not like in Elm Heights, not like in East Side. This is low-hanging fruit. And in fact, I have in front of me the data sent by the Planning Department about projects built in the past five years. And the numbers, the number of bedrooms built in 2020 exceeds every year before that. 1,700 bedrooms were built in multifamily construction alone in 2020. There were 33 single-family construction certificates of zoning compliance issued in 2020. There were only 22 in 2019 and eight in 2018. Clearly, people have not been, there were 149 remodels of zoning compliance issued. The pandemic did not stop the construction. How do you explain that?
How do I explain what?
You, you say that the pandemic was made an exception, but here is.
Well, I don't know. I mean, I'm just saying that's one possibility. I, I guess what I'm saying is, in this, this particular amendment, is that since we've eliminated single-family zoning throughout the city and we now allow plexes in all residential districts throughout the city, you can't just take one geographic area and say extrapolate from there. Maybe, maybe that's true, but you can't say definitively. No one knows.
That geographic area is closer than any other to the campus.
You're interrupting me. So what I'm saying, what I'm saying is, it is unknown. But I guess you're making my case because if, if nothing has occurred, then you should be satisfied with the number 15 because it's probably going to be between 0 and 15. Or, you know, maybe single digits. So this is just, it's just the safeguard because we don't know. That's, that's, that's my argument.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions from council? Councilmember Flaherty?
Thanks. This is just my second round, so I didn't want to go before anyone if others still had questions. But, okay, I'll proceed. One, one concern here, you know, I don't, I appreciate the intent and I think there's some good things here. Some pros and cons, honestly. And I don't think it'll be super impactful, but one concern is sort of the inequitable distribution of rights among members of the community, kind of the whole point of zoning, to some extent. I mean, there's many purposes, but one point of zoning is to sort of create the rules you want and then apply them fairly inequitably to everyone. And by having this, you know, first come, get to build a, or convert, or whatever you'd like to do duplex, and then not for the next person, we might even be creating a, an incentive for something that I think the amendment sponsors don't want, which is that local, let's say landlords or commercial property owners or sort of cooperated business wanting to convert a rental home they own into a duplex versus more of like a single owner of a single house or even an owner-occupied house that faces a different familial situation, financial situation, whatever, and would like to convert their home to a duplex to help pay the mortgage or use excess space, that sort of thing. If, if someone got there first within 150 feet, they no longer have that right. So they've been deprived of that property right that their neighbor has. And again, sort of, if we're looking at first movers, I think it would probably would favor folks with more capital who are operating a business versus a, you know, sort of homeowner looking to maybe, maybe change their home to suit their needs. So I guess I'm wondering, you know, are you concerned about inequitable distribution of rights? And are you concerned about that potential disincentive? Was, was that discussed at all with staff? And I guess the amendment sponsors or staff would like to weigh in on those points. I would appreciate it.
Yes, I would. A point well taken. This is all very risky business as far as I'm concerned. And when Councilmember Rallo and I were first talking about the idea of caps, we started looking at, you know, how to make it an equitable distribution throughout the different neighborhoods. And we couldn't figure out any formula that would be suitable because many neighborhoods are amorphous and the boundaries are not clear. And so then we thought, well, you know, maybe we could do caps by R1, R2, R3. And then we just basically decided on just a single number just as a safeguard to make sure that it didn't exceed that number to the point that it just saturated the core neighborhoods that are going to have to adjust to this change slowly. And, and we, this isn't a perfect solution by any, any means. And with respect to the property rights and who's going to get in there first, I just keep thinking that it is the public sector's responsibility to put guardrails on from any kind of excess. And as we've had a previous discussion with Councilmember Volin about, is this going to be a big, big rush to, to do this and possibly not? We may have anywhere between 0 and 15 in the coming year, once this is enacted. But it was, I think, the best we could come up with at the request of our constituents who want to get some assurance that this isn't going to be a flood that's coming at them that we're going to have to adjust to and adapt to. So I don't have a better answer than that. I don't know if anyone else does.
Thank you. And just a quick clarification, I guess, between those two, I could possible kind of inequities with both, but I'm more concerned about the 150-foot buffer than the cap sort of negatively impacting the, yeah, the, the rights or ability of folks to do things that other Yeah, the the rights or or ability of folks to to do things that others are able to do if they do it first.
Oh, sorry. I'll say to that, that we discussed this obviously at length before we proposed it to the Plan Commission. And then after they voted it out and wanted to discuss other options, like Susan, you know, like Councilperson Sandberg was discussing with Councilperson Rallo, it's hard to pick a different option it because of the way that our community is laid out and where our neighborhoods that were primarily single family are located. So that is why we wanted to include the two year to help address what you're mentioning, the concern for first come, first served. And we think it's a good compromise to be able to address that issue while addressing the concern from the community that, you know, their entire block is going to be complexes and then they'll have, they'll be the ones pushed out. So that that's kind of why we came to that kind of two pronged regulation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Flaherty. Do we have Councilmember Pete Moncive?
Yes, I wanted to ask staff whether there's a time limit for construction once a proposal to build a duplex, if it were to get the approval of the BZA. Is is there a time limit for when it then needs to be acted upon?
Sure, great question. Anyone chime in if I say this wrong, but I'm pretty sure a conditional use is good for three years. So you would have to have your permit pulled before that three years is over to be vested in the ability to use that conditional use permit to build the duplex. So when we were looking at when we were looking at the separation of the time for the two years, we made it slightly shorter so that they that you wouldn't have to wait, physically wait until someone basically built one, is why we didn't make it permit based, to be able to build another one. So that if someone pulls one and doesn't use it, it, you know, that the building permit doesn't have an effect on the next user. So that's why we did two years from the approval of the conditional use. But a conditional use is good for three years, so you have three years to build the structure or make the the changes. Does that make sense? I went a little off the rails there.
Not to, sorry to jump in, Ryan Robling, zoning planner. It's two years for conditional use if they don't get a building permit.
Great, thank you.
And then a building permit would, I assume a building permit also has a time limit on it.
Yes, the building permit time limit is set by the Monroe County Building Department. And so they allow extensions on those typically a year, you typically need to get started within a year. But there are some exceptions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any further questions from council? Councilmember Rosenbarger.
I guess I have one. I think both sponsors have talked about consulting residents who are anti-plex and writing this amendment and just wondering if they also consulted any proplex constituents of theirs.
Well, yes, I think that, well, I I would just say that I I reject this idea of proplex and and anti-plex. I mean, I'm proplex in the appropriate areas is is directed by the by the comprehensive plan. So you know, there are people who I've consulted who own plexes. And yes, so all sides.
I also too wanted to make it very, very clear that we are not against duplexes, triplexes, quadplexes. They are perfectly acceptable housing forms. The missing middle, we just happen to feel, and many of the people who have reached out to us happen to feel, belong in other places other than already built out, already dense, already diversified core neighborhoods. So let's make that really, really clear. I, we've been hearing that repeatedly, but somehow we are against duplexes. That is not the case at all. And the good majority of the people who oppose upzoning in the core neighborhoods feel the same way. It's a matter of location. It's a matter where best they fit, where they don't cause the disruptions that some people are concerned about and that we're trying to put some reasonable conditions in just to be a safeguard. So I really don't want to get into this argument of who's anti-plex and who's proplex. I think it's about suitable housing. We all want to see it. We all want to see the, you know, alleviation of the stresses that we all feel with people wanting to find housing that's affordable and within their means and within an area that they prefer to live in. So if we could just kind of move forward from there, I think it would.
Do you have a follow up, Councilmember?
Follow up, yes. Yes. First, I would just like to ask either one if they want to answer my question. But so my question then is, did you talk to anyone who wants to have plexes in the neighborhood that people don't want them? And talking to people who already own plexes does not mean that they want them because a lot of people who own them don't want other people to have them.
I will just say we've talked to a whole range of people over the many months we've been debating this. And and I believe that I think I've heard a lot from the public pro and con and every other which way. And we feel this is the right thing to do to help provide some conditions that will alleviate everyone's concerns.
Thank you. I believe the next hand I saw was Councilmember Flaherty, unless we have other questions from any other council members. Seeing none, Councilmember Flaherty.
Sure, just wondering if the if the amendment sponsors or staff have a a notion or thought about when and how to revisit this or if we would automatically, if we hit that fifteen cap and and kind of analyze things at that point and consider whether it's necessary or not, or whether the uses we're seeing are desirable and that positive for the community and whether we should remove it. Obviously, you know, the council and planning staff, planning staff could take that up sort of at its initiative at any time. I just wonder if, yeah, if the sponsors or staff had specific thoughts about when and how to revisit this. I'm thinking back to the EDU initial phase in period of 2017 and, you know, it mirrored this discussion in a lot of ways. Really, it was a smaller scale of participants, but I was one of them and you know, it was kind of like this is maybe an okay idea, but some people had concerns. So we really restricted it in a lot of ways, maybe kind of slowed the rollout, but then saw that those restrictions were largely unnecessary, which is why they've been removed since. So just kind of wondering about that and if if if, yeah, either amendment sponsors or or staff had thoughts on on when and how best to revisit this and what we would be looking at at that point.
Councilmember Sandberg, would you like to go or?
Well, would staff like to weigh in? Because again, I think we're all looking at this to see how it's going to roll out and and where we're starting to see some stressors or where we're starting to see some points where we may need to go back and revisit. I don't think we should wait for two years and I think we understand we're going to get reporting back every six months. Is that correct?
I could, I could clarify some of my question if that's okay too. I I feel like I got a little vague there. Is that okay?
Well, I I'll respond. I think I understood it, that it is, when are we going to revisit plexes? I think that we will probably we'll we'll get reporting every six months. I think that we'll look at the numbers in terms of whether it reaches the the cap or not. And we'll have, and if it doesn't reach the cap, then the cap has really won't have any influence on anything. We'll look at the, you know, how it's affected individual neighborhoods, I assume. I I hope that we can instead of having a sort of a blanket approach to plexes throughout all neighborhoods that, you know, we would concentrate on what the comprehensive plan says, which is to use this form of density as a tool by which we can achieve village centers. So that's something that's lacking in this debate right now, then that's a shame because that that is a great opportunity for sustainability, but we're not pursuing that. So I'm 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 very, I'm very looking forward to looking at this as we go.
I'm sorry, please finish, Mr. Rallo.
But no, you know, I I'm happy to revisit this and and change based upon what data we find.
Sure, I I think maybe I was misunderstood a little bit because I didn't mean the broader question of duplexes. And while I don't share your reading of the comprehensive plan, I do support village centers. I don't duplexes are the right form for the center. But more specifically to the cap itself and the equity concerns, what if your number sixteen on a list, we, you know, it's going swimmingly, we've hit fifteen. They've, let's say, twelve of them are condoized owner occupied units and the other threes, you know, the owner lives there. Sort of best of outcomes, I think, for people who want all of these to be homeownership opportunities. But we've hit fifteen, the sixteenth person would like to do it and can't. Are they on a list for the start of next year?
They can wait a few months. They can wait a few months.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Scanlon, if you want.
Yeah, I was just going to say, so obviously the six month six month reporting is built into the ordinance that that it were this to pass as amended would, you know, be signed by President Sims and the mayor. So we will be reporting on, I believe the items listed are, you know, how many requests we've seen, where are they? How many have actually been done? How many, you know, have they requested approvals for? How many have been built, those types of items? We'll we'll be doing that reporting. I think it's also fair to say, and to your point, if we hit fifteen and they are of some sort of if we hit fifteen, that maybe we would come report that as well. And again, give the characteristics of what had been done and, you know, discuss with, of course, the administration and council, does this need to be revisited? Is the number too low? Is it too high? You know, has enough time passed whenever that were to happen? And I have to make a comment on the urban village centers. If you read the comprehensive plan, it's it says commercially mixed use. Duplexes, triplexes aren't the form that is that is dictated by the comprehensive plan for urban village center. So that's something we kind of need to maybe take off the the table. That that's not something that I think will come out of this discussion, deciding that urban village centers are now duplexes. But I think that we would be hoping to bring that information forward every six months about what's been done and seeing if there is a need to adjust. Does that make sense?
It does. I do have a very small clarification follow up. Sorry. I just when we're introducing new things, kind of in a short window of time here, I think there's, it's important to think through all the potential outcomes, possibilities. Again, kind of concerned about a disincentive. Let's say we have ten or twelve built and one owner sign up or get in the queue for all thirty of their properties. And and they take up the the waiting list for the next year. Is there a waiting list? How to, again, this idea of like favoring potentially folks with more capital or more savvy, which is actually, I think, the exact opposite of what both missing middle housing and kind of the intent of of folks is, which is that we want to encourage small scale local development. So I'm not saying this is likely. I'm just wanting to think.
I see. So I think if we were to have fifteen happen quickly and there was lots of interest, we would be reporting to you all, to the decision making bodies about what what those fifteen are, who has interest to see if you all, again, in the administration, think that that number should be increased or or decreased or that it's the appropriate number. I don't think that our plan will be to have a queue and so then to say, okay, you're the you're the fifteen because the queue, this, the fifteen is approvals from the Board of Zoning Appeals and we can't say who's going to get one. So, you know, people can apply and then once fifteen have been done, then it's done. So obviously they'll have to go through that process to know whether or not they're on that list for the year. But yes, I I do think if that were to be the case, that would be like worst case scenario that people are worried about. And that may be something we have to come to you all to discuss.
Okay, that that helps. Thank you so much.
And I would just say, this is the gambit, isn't it? I mean, this is what we're dealing with right now. Anytime you do something new and you open up the gates for anyone, you know, to come forward and to to apply for a permit to to take a a home and convert it to a duplex, that's the risk we're all taking here. And we cannot control if this is going to be done by outside investors or by local companies or by homeowners themselves. That's the problem. And that's the reason why I think it is so critically important for the public sector to put as many guardrails up as we possibly can to try to control some of the excesses that could occur. But we don't have control all over it, you know, again, we're going to kind of be dependent on the free market to do what the free market does and and then sit back and watch and evaluate it once we see what this what this new experiment is going to bring us.
Did you care to comment, Councilmember Rallo?
Well, I just, yeah, I had a clarification, Ms. Scanlon. Isn't that true that a village center, so you think of a village center at a at a node between, say, two arterials, you have some commercial activity, maybe apartments above those. You have, I'm thinking of, for instance, Hillside and Henderson, then you have multifamily. You know, is the the next is very dense housing, then you grade into things like plexes and then lower density. Is that not true?
That's not what the comprehensive plan says.
Isn't that a transect?
We don't use transects in the comprehensive plan, but it does say an urban village center represents the smallest scale of commercial and mixed land use that serves as a high activity node and destination within a neighborhood. So I think the res, I think that the way that the comprehensive plan talks about the actual urban village center is what you're talking about at Hillside at Henderson. It is those multifamily and commercial uses there that support the surrounding neighborhood. Yes, so I mean, yes, that's that's not of, yes, of commercial.
It relies on higher density is what I'm saying. And so this.
Councilmember Rallo, please let her finish. Please, thank you.
Well, no, I just wanted to.
Oh, I understand.
Yes, so yes, mixed use as in the example you gave.
Councilmember Rallo, you have anything further?
No, I don't think that we're that far apart, but I, you know, with the higher density, density, these forms of density occur at village centers.
Thank you. We, Councilmember Volan.
Yes, to the sponsors, you've heard a lot of negative talk about the mayor's referral of the UDO as a three ring binder that can be updated. That they seem to expect that the UDO should be unchanging for a good number of years. But now you say that you're okay with revisiting a limit within six months, let alone two years. How do you reconcile these two positions?
I don't see that there's an issue at all. With the three ring binder approach, all we are saying is that when we're dealing with bricks and mortars, we're dealing with buildings that are going to be created, it's, you're not going to be able to reverse that. Once we open it up, you're not going to be able to reverse that.
Why revisit it at all?
With regard to observing a a new change in policy to see how it's going so that we can, as intelligent beings, adjust it as we need to, I don't see that there's a any hypocrisy there whatsoever, if that's what you're trying to accuse us of.
I'm I'm simply saying that it works either way, whether you have a cap or not, it can be revisited in six months. You two have admitted that you're perfectly happy to revisit a cap after six months. You're not willing to revisit an uncapped number after six months. But you're willing to revisit the UDO at all is a sign that you're willing to revisit the UDO, which is something that the the public has expressed a negative feeling toward.
Thank you, Councilmember Volan. Would either of the sponsors care to respond or appears they changed?
It's a rhetorical, that's a rhetorical statement. I don't agree, but go ahead.
Thank you very much. Do we have any further questions from council before we go to public comment? Okay, seeing down, Ms. Lacy. We're prepared.
We do have public. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Should the public wish to comment, they can raise their hand in Zoom or they can send the meeting host a chat message indicating that they'd like to comment. We have several commenters with raised hands and I have more comments in the chat that I've been asked to read. So if it's okay with you, President Sims, we'll go with people with the hands raised and then I can read.
That's fine with me. I just also would like to remind our public commenters that they will have three minutes to speak and that if there was more than one person on any device who wished to speak, please let us know so we could try to accommodate them. So who do we have?
Chris Sturbaum will be first. The other thing that I was going to say is I will keep time and I will let the public know when there is one minute remaining by holding my hand up and when time has run, I will make like the timeout sign. And Chris Sturbaum should be able to unmute now.
Okay, well, thank you. I wanted to respond to Councilmember Flaherty's concern about the homeowner who might be trapped. trapped by the hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer. I think we've all forgotten about the ADUs. A homeowner can basically duplex with an ADU. You don't have to build them in the backyard. Very simple, turn it into a duplex. In fact, this, these limits could be an incentive for ADUs, which are kind of the forgotten stepchild here. I also would like to thank Councilmember Bolen for showing how slow development actually is. People are waiting to see what happens, and because they're in a zone where they could make even more money than a duplex, people hold property until they have a big opportunity, and plus, they probably want to see what we're gonna do next. So you made a great point that we would have no negative effect by having a cap in the slow speed of the way development worked. I also have been talking about the history of our community. It's especially relevant in that somebody said last meeting that they didn't think we'd experienced upzoning in Bloomington before. You know, the fact is that under Mayor Jack Hooker, nineteen sixty-four to nineteen seventy-one, they had upzoning all over the place. The only difference was, they had meetings without the public involved, and they upzoned property. And when you upzone, of course, you add value, you can benefit somebody greatly, and you can also have unintended consequences. And the Democrats were so upset about the way things were going with the upzoning of random properties, that when they took over in nineteen seventy-one, they thought it was a good idea to uniformly upzone what the single-family zoning that existed, and they did it by changing the definition of single-family zoning to five instead of three. They thought this would be equitable, they thought this would solve a problem, and it in fact was a disaster. The conversions started happening at a great rate over the next ten or twenty years, and disrupted neighborhoods and did damage to the, that's existing to this day. The Tommy Allison's administration in nineteen eighty-three to nineteen ninety-five went through a huge process. It was the first comprehensive plan work, and they had to do this because they would be sued for takings if they reversed that just on a dime, so they needed this public process. They involved the community in ways that the community had never been involved in before. And the Democrats also brought in all these committees.
Thank you, Mr. Sterbaum, you've exhausted your time. Thank you.
Oh, I couldn't see my hand raised.
That's okay, you have, thank you. Who do we have next?
It's happened before, and thank you for listening.
We may have next, Lacy.
Next, we have Mark's iPad, who should be able to unmute and state their full name.
Hi, my name's Mark Cornet. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. I would like to support this amendment, and council folks already tonight have made the case for a cap. None have been done, so a cap shouldn't be a worry for the folks that are rushing to do this. I wanna make a few points, and it's difficult to, to participate in this process. This is one of the, the most disheartening times I've had in, in listening to council and listening to zoning debates in our community. In order to do this, we have to dismiss local ideas, we have to repeat ideological mantras and dogmas, we have to introduce irrelevant data and research from somewhere else, we have to co-opt sensitive social ideals, we have to co-opt planning terms that are popular, we have to claim zoning success. We have to ignore local conditions in markets, we have to rationalize decisions with deflection points that are often irrelevant, and we have to make public participation feel useless. I'm offended as a participant in a process in the city of Bloomington's zoning process, and there are so many better ways to do this. For example, we've also eliminated PUDs. The only time I've had success with dense development is when I went around the zoning ordinance and enabled the PD process. South Dunn Street is a product of PUD process. Beeline Station is a pro, is a product of PUD process, where we mixed uses, we mixed densities, we promoted ADUs way before their time at South Dunn Street, and were, were rejected by the city planning staff at that time. And I find it really, really disheartening to be going through this process, and that where we're finally trying to actually take out the affordable housing stock of our community. The land value underneath these properties is the real cost of doing business in Bloomington. South Dunn Street per square foot taxable land is thirty-six dollars. Who's Your Acres is six dollars. Why is that? Why is the downtown so darn valuable? Why is the core neighborhoods so darn valuable? In fact, we already know that the rental market is robust and being met in the high-dollar market rate, and I would even split the market rate concept up into students.
Thank you, Mr. Cornet, you've exhausted your time. Thank you. And I will also remind those in public comment that three minutes is what we're allowing this evening, and I've also been reminded to remind you all to make sure that your comments are directed for Amendment Three, which is currently on the table now. Ms. Lacy?
Next, we have Kathleen Myers, who should be able to unmute.
Ms. Myers? Okay, she can unmute her. Are you there, Ms. Myers? Okay, if we can go to the next person, and we'll, if she unmutes herself, we can accommodate her.
Okay. Next, we have Beau Valance, who should be able to unmute.
Yes, hi.
Hello.
Hi.
Yes.
Okay, my name is Beau Valance. I feel like I live in Elm Heights, but my tax notice actually says Maxwell Manners, still a great established neighborhood. I strongly support Amendment Three, it could save us almost. I was relieved that the conditional use amendment passed last night. It's not much, but it does acknowledge that there should be standards, maybe, I hope. Amendment Three, it seems to me, gives meaning to those conditions. By limiting the duplexes to fifteen annually and spacing them at least a hundred-and-fifty feet apart, we might be inches closer to the so-called experiment that the plexing plan claims to create. These conditions, working together, could discourage developers from bulldozing entire blocks, encouraging them instead to salt new plexes among neighborhoods with attention, maybe, to compatible design. This amendment can save us from the real dangers of unlimited and relatively unregulated plexing, and give us all time, mainly, give us all time to see how it works, to see how duplexing, as opposed to the ADUs that do encourage homeownership rather than more rental units, to see how duplexing changes things, perhaps for tweaking other conditions later. Every six months, maybe. Please support Amendment Three. It might save our neighborhoods from rapid destruction and give us experience to look back on, and time for the next zoning upheaval. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Who do we have next, Ms. Lacy?
I, I was wondering if, maybe, or it was suggested to me that I should read the next five names, so people would know that they're in the queue. So we would have Patricia Foster next, Victoria Hilkevich, I'm sorry for the mispronunciation, Richard Lewis, Janice Sorby, and Ramsey Harrick. So next will be Patricia Foster, who should be able to unmute.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
I've been having trouble with my mic, so. My name is Patricia Foster, and I live in Elm Heights, and I'm asking the council to please vote yes on Amendment Three, that will lessen the impact that duplexes will have on the core neighborhoods. The discussion focuses on solving Bloomington's housing problem. It seems the enormous impact that student housing has on our community is minimized or ignored. About twenty-two thousand undergraduate students and seven graduate students live off-campus. This means that twenty-nine thousand students are competing with each other and with the other residents for rental housing. That puts pressure on rents and also on house prices as developers compete to buy houses to rent. I looked at listings on Zillow today, and student rentals in the neighborhoods around campuses are averaging from seven-hundred to eight-hundred dollars per bedroom per month. Rooms in the more upscale apartment buildings downtown are in the thousand-dollar range. Students want to live near campus, and the cost of renting houses, rental houses is slightly less than the big apartment complexes near campus. So this, even so, the market means that at current rents, a duplex with six students will bring in at least fifty thousand dollars and as much as seventy-two thousand dollars a year. Clearly, this is strong motivations to convert single-family homes, whether owned or rented, to duplexes, and then to rent those units by the room. It has been said over and over that interplexes into residential neighborhoods is incremental, that it can be done sensitively, that it's no big deal. I beg to differ, it is a big deal. Without guardrails, conditional use is not much better than by right. Unchecked, we can expect demolitions and conversions to duplexes that will radically change the nature of our core neighborhoods, driving up prices and worsening the housing problems. Amendment Three adds back the same additional criteria for permitting duplexes in R1 to R3 that the planning staff and the mayor proposed back in March, but that were eliminated by the draconian decisions of the Plan Commission. So I ask you to please vote yes on Amendment Three, to put these guardrails back in place. Limiting duplexes in time and space will at least slow down the potential destruction of our neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Foster. Who do we have next?
Next, next, that's all right. Next, we have Victoria Hilkevich, who should be able to unmute.
Hi, I am a Somax resident in District One. I'm retired, I'm a homeowner. I am worried about the caps and buffers proposed. They, they would further constrain the conditional approval of duplexes. Making duplexes conditional already is a barrier to those who work long hours, care for young children, and are otherwise seriously time constrained. I know personally how demanding it is to go obtain permission from the city due to my experience in obtaining an ordinance to construct a ground-mounted solar display on my front lawn. I simply could not have done it if I was not retired. Nonetheless, the council, the council's agreeing to lift the twenty-five-year ban on duplexes conditionally as opposed to by right is a reasonable middle ground. To add still more obstacles feels like yet another effort to defeat allowing duplexes in the core neighborhoods. Our elected officials have spoken, they have compromised enough. Let us move forward, so many of our end goals are the same. Let's work together with wisdom, care, and kindness.
Thank you for your comments.
Next, we have Richard Lewis, who should be able to unmute.
Thank you very much. Good evening, President Sims and members of council. I appreciate your time tonight and the contributions from city planning staff. I do support, oh, sorry, Richard Lewis, Prospect Hill resident. I do support Amendment Three and appreciate Councilmembers Sandberg and Rollo for bringing that forward. And again, a reminder that the one-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer was something that planning staff proposed initially before the Plan Commission stripped it away, so I appreciate that that is back in as a guardrail. I think that overall it does little harm, and, and again, keeps the guardrails in place. I appreciate also the six-month reporting function, as mentioned by Ms. Scanlon, and I think that's a useful feature. And for Councilmember Bolen, who is worried about the speed of city council, I would remind him of Councilmember Piedmont Smith's comment last night, that council can in fact act quite nimbly when called upon to do so, and I have full confidence that you all can do that. So I think, start with the least amount of harm to the neighborhoods and keep the guardrails in place, and then reexamine at six months or as needed. Thank you all so much, and please support Amendment Three.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Lewis.
Next, we have Janice Sorby, who should be able to unmute.
Hi, I'm Janice Sorby, and I support Amendment Three. A duplex doubles or triples the intensity of use on a parcel. More cars, noise, people, trash. We can understand that a single duplex will impact more households when lots are small and close together than if they are far apart. This buffer will encompass about twenty to twenty-five households in the core neighborhoods, where lots are about forty by thirty, a hundred-and-thirty feet. On the flip side, in Hyde Park, a single lot can be a hundred-and-thirty by a hundred-and-eighty feet, and the buffer there encompasses only the immediate properties. So I looked to see what other communities said about this. I turned to Madison, Wisconsin, because the plan staff said they used their UDO as a prototype for our changes. Here's what Madison says regarding spacing between conditional-use permitted developments. Exercise care to avoid an over-concentration of community living arrangements, which could create an institutional setting and seriously strain the existing social structure of a community. Considerations relevant for this determination are: the distance between the proposed faculty and the other facility; the capacity of the proposed facility and the percentage by which the facility will increase the population of the community; the total capacity of all community living arrangements in the community; the impact on the community of all other living community arrangements. This advises extreme care must be provided to avoid an over-concentration of development that might strain the existing neighborhoods. The hundred-and-fifty buffer is okay. It's just not fair between core neighborhoods and the large-lot subdivisions. Nevertheless, it is a real starting point to help mitigate, and I fully encourage you to vote for this buffer. I think that the idea of a test always has constraints and it has controls, and this is a very, very basic control. Thank you very much for listening to me tonight, and please vote.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Sorby.
Next, we have, next, we have Ramsey Harrick, who should be able to unmute.
Yes, hi, I'm Ramsey Harrick, and I still live on the Near East Side. There seems to be some confusion about what constitutes a compromise in this debate, and we already heard that this evening. A compromise, of course, involves each side giving up something of value to it, otherwise it's not a compromise. Conditional use is clearly not a compromise. For everybody understands that the BZA process is nothing but a rubber stamp, a token delay for the sake of appearances, and that developers will get exactly what they want ninety-nine times out of one hundred. If conditional use in any way did impede the march of upzoning progress, you can be sure that the upzoners on the council wouldn't have gone anywhere near it. Conditional use gives them, like the developers, everything they want. Now, a true compromise would look something like this, a limit to the number of plexes allowed per year, say fifteen. This would go a long way toward alleviating one of the greatest concerns about upzoning, that core neighborhoods already stressed by encroaching rentals would quickly reach a tipping point when developers begin their feeding frenzy. This cap would also allow Bloomington to return this experiment to a scientific footing, for it would allow us to observe in real time here in Bloomington, not in Portland, what actually happens when developer-driven plexes go up in a core neighborhood. Do poor people get to live in them? Does diversity improve in the neighborhood? Do housing prices decline? This measured experiment will allow us to find out, and will do so without blowing up the lab. A good compromise also gives each side something they want very much. Here, the upzoners would get their plexes as part of their toolbox, and the residents of our core neighborhoods would get to hang on to the homes and communities they've invested so much in. Please vote for this very sensible and civic-minded compromise that puts Bloomington, not developers, first. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Thank you for your comments.
The next five commenters will be Joe Lee, Seda Cohen, Jim Rosenbarger, Kathy Crabtree, and Dave Warren. So, starting with Joe Lee, who should be now able to unmute.
Here we are. And I want to say that there was much talk yet last evening about compromise. And I think even those who were in favor of the so-called Compromise of Amendment Two would have to admit that was what they call in Britain, very weak tea. So, this is a real compromise. It will slow down. It does everything that the proponents of these upzoning have talked about. It will be an experiment. We can see. The mayor can take out his three-ring binder, and we can see where we go next. So I strongly urge all of you to, in the spirit of compromise and in the spirit of Bloomington, our beloved city, vote for amendment three. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Lee.
Next is Seda Cohen, who should be able to unmute.
Thank you. My name is Seda Cohen, and I've lived in Bloomington for over fifty years, with over thirty of those in the Near West Side. I was very disappointed in the council's decision to allow plexes in the already dense, diverse core neighborhoods. However, since it doesn't appear that decision can be changed, I urge you to vote for amendment three. At the very least, it adds some guardrails to the approved vote for conditional use, which is a good beginning in trying to preserve some of our oldest, most historic neighborhoods. Thank you to councilmembers Rollo and Sandberg for listening to the many valid concerns from the public and introducing this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Foster.
Next is Jim Rosenbarger, who should be able to unmute.
Thank you. I'm Jim Rosenbarger. I support this amendment and the need for caps. I'd like to add that I live in a neighborhood with strong student rental demand. Our house has undergraduate rentals as both next-door neighbors. If we lose the plex lottery and a duplex goes in across the street, we'll be surrounded by a dozen students. Over three decades ago, the New Urbanists, a group of architects and planners, motivated by the love of residence and visitors felt for traditional neighborhoods and towns. Their important work has become the dominant school of thought in urban planning and transportation. The New Urbanists began with a careful rediscovery of patterns embedded in historic communities. Narrow streets, excuse me, narrow streets, alleys laid out in grids, walkability, and a compatible and dense mix of well-built buildings in a wide range of types and styles. They walked the historic streets, measured details of buildings and infrastructure, and then creatively replicated those patterns in new buildings, neighborhoods, and towns. To develop compatibility, they developed farm-based zoning codes. There's an example with the West Kirkwood Plan from two thousand and two, still available on the city's website. New Urbanists also implemented another useful planning tool, the transect. This tool ranges buildings in a gradual stepping transition from low, small, and modest to tall, large, and grand. New Urbanists were also activists criticizing our dependence suburban sprawl, car dependence urban sprawl with books such as Suburban Nation. They strongly opposed ego-driven, trendy, top-down design concepts being dropped on neighborhoods and disrupting historic patterns. The authors of the book Missing Middle are second-generation New Urbanists. They inherited the idea of closely mixing multifamily and single-family dwellings and turned it into a popular trend. While we need more dense, walkable neighborhoods, it's sadly ironic that implementation of the missing middle concept is being dropped indiscriminately across entire cities without the essential careful study utilized by those who rediscovered the value of historic neighborhoods decades ago. Since we are launching plexes with limited studies, strong limits and caps are essential to implement the necessary revisions that will come up. Note that design controls are minimal, and none are apparently included for additions. Has anyone seen any drawings for new plexes? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Rosenbarger.
Next, we have Kathy Crabtree, who should be able to unmute.
Hi, I'm Kathy Crabtree. I'm a homeowner in the Near West Side, one of the so-called special-core neighborhoods. Amendment two, which was unanimously approved last night, struck a really fair middle ground among very disparate views. It is a significant compromise between those who want to ban duplexes in residential neighborhoods and those of us who want to allow duplexes, triplexes, and quadplexes in residential neighborhoods. That is a big compromise. Significant constraints and requirements are already imposed on duplexes in the U D O and in amendment two. Many more limitations than are imposed on single-family houses, as was discussed last night. So why are we unnecessarily complicating things with these additional restrictions? The one-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer is arbitrary and unfair, which is why it was rejected by the Plan Commission, who is the advisory body regarding planning. Why should two homeowners who live near each other have to compete to make their home into a duplex? It pits one homeowner, one neighbor, against another in a race to submit their request. The caps are unnecessary, too, and again, fifteen per year is arbitrary and still pits one another to get their permits requests submitted. I recognize the privilege that allows me to be here. I have the luxury to make time to attend these meetings. I spoke with a young father yesterday who's very interested in this issue and who supports duplexes, but he has work and family obligations that prevent him from attending. I'm sure he's not alone. So I question that the vast majority of the community is concerned about duplexes. Perhaps the landlords who currently own duplexes, don't want the competition, are concerned about duplexes, or the vocal minority of people with the time to engage on this issue are concerned about duplexes. I'm reminded of a saying from a poster on my wall. No one is silent, though many are not heard. I hope city council will remember all of the folks they represent, even those who aren't as privileged to have the time to engage and vote no on these unnecessary and arbitrary restrictions. Please vote no on this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Crabtree.
Next, we have Dave Warren, who should be able to unmute.
Hello, and thanks to everyone again for all the time and energy that's been spent on this, regardless of your position. I do want to quickly touch on this idea of outside investors and developers. Over the last five years in Monroe County, homeowners have increased their equity by two-point-one billion dollars with a B. Within the city, that number is seven-hundred-and-fifty million dollars, despite only a third of the community owning homes. That's just owner-occupied homes. Local landlords, some of whom rent out duplexes and triplexes and quads, and have been vocally against allowing other people to have them in this debate, aren't even a part of that enormous number. And those equity gains go almost entirely uncaptured by the property tax because of the state caps, the total property tax levy. So I just wanted to make that point. Now, I'm asking you to please reject amendment three, which creates two unnecessary and unfair burdens on those who wish to build a duplex or convert their existing home to one. Passing amendment two last night, followed by passing amendment three, would be like taking two steps forward and one-point-nine steps back. It defeats the purpose of amendment two, which was intended and voted on as a middle-ground compromise reflecting the fact that a majority of Plan Commission and City Council members endorse making it easier to add duplexes throughout Bloomington. It also defeats the purpose of striking down amendment one, because the one-hundred-and-fifty-foot buffer rule means that if someone within one-hundred-and-fifty feet of you happens to beat you to conditional approval, you are banned from doing the same, essentially leaving some residents with plex bans and others with a plex. That's simply unfair and an unnecessary complication that will result in pockets of the city where duplexes are still effectively banned, all while single-family houses continue to be bought and flipped into larger, more expensive ones by right. The fifteen duplex cap is also unnecessary and works against making our community more affordable. Why? Because single-family homes, again, easily the most expensive type of house, don't face such caps. And I wouldn't, you know, I wouldn't recommend you have caps on that because we have a housing crisis. But the law would still continue to prioritize the most expensive type of house that takes up the most amount of space in the middle of a severe affordability crisis. Please reject this amendment and its intent to continue this costly prioritization, which harms renters and would-be homeowners alike by continuing to make it difficult to increase the supply of more affordable housing options throughout Bloomington. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next, we have a second speaker from Ramsey Herrick's iPad, and then followed by Sarah K. Helane, Wendy Bernstein, David Hill, Daniel Bingham, and Greg Alexander.
Thank you.
And the speaker should be able to unmute and state their full name.
Hello, my name is Lori Havenor, and I'm a resident of Elm Heights. I strongly urge you to vote for amendment three. Your vote for this amendment will provide some reassurance to homeowners, like me, in the core neighborhoods, that there will be a degree of damage control once this process has concluded. And how do we know that there will be damage? Simply because this is not a new experiment, no matter how many people insist on ignoring the facts of Bloomington's history and openly pretend that upzoning is somehow a novel idea. The intact core neighborhoods we still have amount, quite simply, to what is left over from the last time this type of housing experiment took place in Bloomington. It has been no less than mortifying to see members of our city government attempt to fully sell out to corporate interests under the guise of social justice. And finally, I just want to thank Dave Rollo and Susan Sandberg, the sponsors of this amendment, for their tireless commitment to their constituents and to the democratic process. I truly hate to think where we would be as a city without your leadership, wisdom, and deep care for those whom you serve. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next, we have Sarah K. Helane, who should be able to unmute.
Yeah, hello. Thank you. I'm gonna read an excerpt from a piece titled "The New Redlining Is Deciding Who Lives in Your Neighborhood" by Richard Kellenberg from the Century Foundation, who focuses on segregation in schools and housing from April nineteenth in The New York Times. Economically discriminatory zoning policies are not part of a distant disgraceful past. Today, redlining lives on under the guise of single-family zoning laws. By banning multifamily housing units, many communities have essentially locked out people of color who have less wealth and cannot afford single-family homes' higher down payments. Single-family exclusionary zoning, which was adopted by communities shortly after the Supreme Court struck down explicit racial zoning in nineteen-seventeen, is widely known as the new redlining. Racial discrimination has created an enormous wealth gap between the white and black communities, and single-family zoning only perpetuates that inequity. While exclusionary zoning laws are especially harmful to black people, the discrimination is more broadly rooted in classism. If race were the only factor driving exclusionary zoning, one would expect to see such policies most extensively promoted in communities where racial intolerance is highest. But in fact, the most restrictive zoning is found in politically liberal cities where racial views are more progressive. As Harvard Michael Sandel has noted, social psychologists have found that highly educated elites, quote, "may denounce racism and sexism, but are unapologetic about their negative attitudes towards the less educated." Class discrimination helps explain why, despite a twenty-five percent decline in black-and-white residential segregation since nineteen-seventy, income segregation has more than doubled. That's the end of my excerpt, but at this point in the article, there is a link to a study done over five years by two Stanford professors. I find it very concerning to hear that councilmembers who support plexes want this current segregation to continue by stating that they support plexes, just not in the neighborhoods that they represent. Beyond the argument over plexes that we are all grappling with here, this process has exposed longstanding race and class issues that we are clearly struggling to address in this community. Please vote no on amendment three to ensure that our future does not look like our racially and economically segregated past. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next, we have Wendy Bernstein, who should be able to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me? I'm Ed Bernstein, sharing a computer.
Yes, we're fine, Mr. Bernstein.
Okay, and then my wife will go afterwards. I support amendment three. I think it's a sensible compromise. Given the fact that the voices of the majority of neighbors was ignored, and I do not think we're the vocal minority, I think this is just adding more divisive rhetoric. And also that amendment one was defeated, the least we can do is support this amendment. Amendment two was a Band-Aid compromise, at best, with no teeth, to protect the neighbors. This new amendment offers a compromise and should be supported, and will help Bloomington have a less divisive future. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Bernstein.
I would like to speak now, please.
Okay, Ms. Bernstein, just for a second, and we'll make sure you get your three minutes. I just want to remind everyone in the public that if you want to have public comment, please indicate by using the raise hand function in chat or in Zoom, or you can send us the meeting host a note in chat. And if you have more than one person on any device, then please let us know that so we can properly account for you. And public speakers are limited to three minutes this evening. So, thank you, Ms. Bernstein, for your patience. You can go ahead now.
Okay, Wendy Bernstein, Maxwell Lane on the border of Elm Heights and Maxwell, south of Maxwell. I'd like to bring up something real sticky, and I hope I do not offend anybody. But I'm kind of offended at some of the people who've indicated that because I live in a single-family neighborhood, I'm a racist and a classist. We do have socioeconomic limits in various neighborhoods. I would not call this redlining. And I think it's a tremendous irony that some people in the statements they're making assume that all people of color are poor. And that is so not true. And there are people of color in every neighborhood in Bloomington, except there are some areas where the majority of people would not be very hospitable to them. I've canvassed in those neighborhoods, and I've felt racism in various situations in looking for rental houses in this town. I want to say that amendment two did not help our neighborhoods limit the numbers of duplexes simply because conditional use is the same as permitted use if all the conditions are met and presented to the B Z A. So, conditional equals permitted in most instances. As for competition between neighbors wanting to have duplexes, I don't know if it's possible, but if we could have a law that said if you own your building and want to expand it into a duplex and will be an owner-occupier in that building, then maybe you wouldn't have to compete with your neighbors, and you could both create a duplex. I am sorry to see the supersizing of a lot of single-family homes in neighborhoods, but it's not something that the neighbors have cause in any way. And I think the development community and the real estate community, many of whom populate the Planning Commission, have a lot of responsibility in the definition of our city as well as citizens. And I don't know how zoning can help put limits there, but I think that would be positive. And I don't know how zoning can help put limits there, but I think that would be positive. I also want to say that preservation shouldn't go out the door in the name of so-called progress. We do need to preserve some of our historic valuable housing stock that's not in the historic districts, which describes my house. Thank you very much.
For your comments, Ms. Bernstein.
Next, we have David Hill, who should be able to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much, Councilmembers.
You have three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. I am a homeowner in Bloomington, in the Blue Ridge District. I wrote out all sorts of derogatory, nasty things to say about you people. I'm going to retract all that. I'm going to say you are in an incredibly difficult position. You have to weigh the values that dozens of different factions push upon you. And I respect all of your opinions. I will say, jumping to the chase, that I totally am in favor of Amendment Three. And I hope that you will use Amendment Three as a way to garner support for where you have gone on this whole mission. It is very, very difficult for an uninformed, outlying citizen like myself to understand how you can completely disregard the vote of the majority of citizens in this community. The fact that you have is immaterial. We are dealing now with where we're at. And I think we need to think about the future. And not only what the future means to housing in Bloomington, but what the future means to what we think about each of you. You know, we need to have respect and support for you. We elected you. We wanted you to be our representatives. So, we need for you to understand that we don't agree with you on a lot of what has happened in the last few weeks. That does not mean you are wrong or we are wrong. It means that contrary to what modern-day politics shows, there is room for disagreement in our world. There's room for us to discuss this and to look at both sides of the question. I don't know what the answer is. I don't pretend to know. I only know that we should be able to discuss it without threats and ridiculous concerns and bases. I thank you all for what you do.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Hill.
Next, we have Daniel Bingham, who should be able to unmute.
Hi.
Hi, Mr. Bingham. You have about three minutes.
Thank you. There's been a lot of talk about how introducing duplexes is an experiment, but it is not an experiment. Plexes in neighborhoods, mixed multifamily neighborhoods, is the traditional form of housing. Single-family zoning is the experiment, a 100-year-old experiment that has gone very wrong. It was invented by racist housing developers who wanted to drive up the price of housing in their developments to segregate those developments. And they convinced the developers around them to implement single-family zoning to have similar effects on their neighborhoods. There have been multiple studies that have found that even though we might not want it to have this effect, it is still having this effect today. These are not studies of individual communities, but these are studies that looked at many diverse communities. They consistently found that neighborhoods owned single-family were segregated, and that the effect was tied directly to the housing form of those neighborhoods that zoning mandated. Multifamily neighborhoods were way more diverse, twice as diverse or more than single-family zone neighborhoods. And this effect showed even across the street. Across the street, multifamily housing would be twice as diverse as the single-family housing on the other side of it. Segregated neighborhoods means segregated schools. We need the duplexes. We need them now because they are how we desegregate our neighborhoods and therefore our schools. Their introduction is already going to be slow. Steve Volin's evidence shows that, and a year would they've been by right, allowed by right, in multiple neighborhoods, none have gone in. My own experience trying to develop affordable housing, pulling it out of the free market on Bloomington Cooperative Living's board, shows that housing development is just slow. It takes a long time. It's expensive. It's complicated. There's a lot of back and forth, and even the building process takes a very long time. The zoning itself will not desegregate the neighborhoods. The dense housing it allows is what will desegregate them, and we need it as soon as possible. We also need these duplexes because we need to create a low-carbon city, which means a dense city. Duplexes are the smallest step in this direction, but they are an important one. They're a step in the right direction. There was a study last summer that found that we are already getting temperatures in the tropical areas that are literally too hot for human habitation due to climate change. People are dying just from being outside without air conditioning. Climate scientists predicted that this might happen by the end of the century, but it's happening now, eight decades earlier than we thought it would. The Indiana Huplins Housing Study found that there are 30,000 people who commute into the city every day. Every one, 30,000, three zero thousand. Every one of those trips has carbon we cannot afford to be putting to the atmosphere. We need housing for them in the city so that they can walk and bike to their jobs, their grocery stores. We need a lot of housing. We need these duplexes, and we need them yesterday. We need triplexes and quadplexes too, but those have already been sacrificed in order to compromise with those who are insistent that nothing changed, even though the status quo is deeply harmful to future generations and deeply harmful to minorities and oppressed minorities.
Mr. Bingham, I'm sorry you've exhausted your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Greg Alexander, who should be able to unmute.
Awesome. Thank you. My name is Greg Alexander. I ask you to vote against Amendment Three. You know, I'm going to go ahead and admit that there are risks with duplex development. It's true, duplexes really do put a strain on roads and infrastructure. It's just that that strain is so much less than the strain imposed by leapfrog development and single-family sprawl. It's true, duplexes really do run a risk of monotony, I guess. It's just so much less than the monotony of single-family neighborhoods interspersed with isolated, big, multifamily developments. It's even true that duplexes make opportunities for investors to cause damage. But gee, have you seen what investors have been doing to our single-family neighborhoods? Already, under single-family zoning. We've had a systematic failure to acknowledge the opportunity costs here. The fact that if we do not allow duplexes, development still goes on. Change will still occur, and in much more destructive and undesirable forms. So, in my neighborhood, I have seen three houses knocked over and left as vacant lots for years. Can we put a limit on that? No more than 15 new vacant lots per year? I've seen many houses flipped from affordable to more than $300,000, and that has put a lot of pressure on the whole neighborhood as investors are now eagerly looking for opportunities to repeat that accomplishment. Can we put a limit on that? If you flip a house to $300,000, then none of the other houses within 150 feet can sell for more than $300,000 for two years. There was a specific house in my neighborhood, the Breakthrough House, the first one to go on the market for over $300,000 immediately after a fresh remodel from less than $100,000. And in order to achieve that, they had to leave it sitting vacant on the market for most of a year, waiting for the right whale of a buyer to come along. Can we put a limit on that? Vacant housing causes such a huge damage to our neighborhood, especially when it's just paving the way for gentrification and more unaffordable development. They had to get so many permits from the city to do that. Surely, there's some bump in the road you could put in front of this behavior. And we are still developing multifamily housing at the edges of town where the vast majority of people will own cars, will drive every day, putting an incredible strain on our transportation infrastructure, literally generating long-range car trips that go by my front yard, bellowing smoke into my living room. Can we put a limit on the number of bedrooms developed at the edges of the city? I'm serious. The status quo is radically changing the nature of my neighborhood. We've got huge problems. If you're going to start doing this to one kind of housing, gee, could we do this to the kinds of development that have actually already been posing huge problems for us? Are we actually concerned about these real problems, or are we just trying to exempt one class of people from the forces of change? You know, one of the best things about my neighborhood is tiny apartment buildings, right in the middle of our residential fabric. A block from me, there's a seven-unit building and a regular fifth-acre lot that used to be a single-family house, but now it's seven units. It's still a single-family today. I love that building. I love its affordable rental units, and I love the people that it brings to my neighborhood. Simply legalizing duplexes is already a huge compromise to me. Duplexes are a tiny incremental step when we desperately need radical changes to rein in sprawl, a problem that has been in front of us for decades. When are we going to do something about this? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Chalitson. Ms. Lacy, is it proper to, or when you get a break between a group you've identified, we might try Ms. Myers again?
We can start with her, and then the following folks will be after. There'll be the person with the screen name RM, who I believe is Renee Miller, Pam Weaver, iPhone Greg Raggo, Doug Moore, Jared Alexander, followed by Jeff Richardson. And now I will attempt to unmute Kathleen Myers.
Thank you.
She may unmute herself and state her full name for the record.
Ms. Myers, are you present?
It does not appear that she's unmuting, so I think...
Okay, now let's proceed. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I just wanted to be courteous.
The person with the screen name RM, who I believe is Renee Miller, should be able to unmute and state their name for the record.
Can you hear me?
You sure can. How are you this evening?
Doing fine. How about you, President?
Thank you. You have about three minutes.
Okay. After the House meeting that I attended, I wasn't going to speak again at another city council meeting. Someone said this is the most difficult times in council meetings. But let me remind you that not too long ago, close to 300 people attended a Zoom council meeting, and we felt unheard. I just lost my notes, all of them. 300, almost 300 people. And we did feel unheard. So while I understand that feeling, we did see a compromise last night, and this amendment does nothing more than put unfair and undue burdens on people. The 150-foot buffer and two-year wait will not be fair to my neighbor if they want to build a duplex or vice versa. This is classism and is based on forced segregation. We do need the missing middle in housing. I don't have a whole lot more to say, other than I am very opposed to this amendment. And I would like to see this voted down. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Miller.
Maggie, able to unmute?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. You have to unmute yourself again, Ms. Weaver.
All right, unmuted again.
We hear you now. Thank you.
Okay, I'm a homeowner in a core neighborhood, and I'd like to ask you not to support this amendment. The buffer zone is a first-come, first-served process seems problematic. The conditional use start time with the building permits, the time limit that's described tonight, seem to have too much wiggle room. And I just don't feel it addressed the core concern, which is the possibility that those who would really like to build duplexes will be purposely precluded from doing so by those who would like to exclude them from certain neighborhoods. And the kind of heat that I hear in comments makes me feel that that's a real possibility in the core neighborhoods. I also want to reinforce something Councilmember Flaherty has already mentioned, which is the concern that first-come, first-served seems to favor the pockets of the money to move forward to then, for example, an existing resident who wants to add another unit onto their current home. I'm also wondering what happens if there's an approved R4 lot within that 150-foot buffer. Maybe one of the planning department staffers could address that issue. I personally don't think a buffer zone needs to be imposed, but if it is, it shouldn't be approved, in my opinion, unless these problems are completely nailed down, so that it can't be abused. Likewise, as others have said, establishing a maximum number of duplexes at 10 or 15 or whatever seems completely random. And I can't tell from the language if the limit is 15 anywhere in town in the sum of all R3s, all R1, plus R2, plus R3. Again, if the UDO is going to impose a maximum, shouldn't we be asking, "What is too many?", with a justification? Or maybe we should even be answering the question, "What is too few? And what do we need to do to incentivize more building?" I personally don't believe a maximum is necessary, but again, if a maximum is going to be imposed, shouldn't that maximum be some kind of real number? To talk about characteristics in relation to who decides to build or live in duplexes is also really troubling to me. What are favorable characteristics? What are unfavorable characteristics? Personally, I'd like to share my own neighborhood with as many people with as many characteristics as possible. So, please vote no to this amendment. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
Next, we have the person with the screen name iPhone Greg Raggo, who should be able to unmute.
Yeah. Hello, you got me?
Yes, we have you. Yes, we have you.
Yeah, this is Greg Raggo from the Bryant Park neighborhood. That's okay. I just want to thank Councilmembers Sandberg and Rallo for their hard work and support. And the rest of you, I think you know how I feel. I would just say, please support Amendment Three, which I know is falling on deaf ears, but that's all I got to say. Support Amendment Three, and thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next, we have Doug Moore, who should be able to unmute.
Hi, this is not Doug Moore. My name is Patty Ingham, sharing his screen. And I have lived on South Stull Avenue for 17 years. Thanks for the opportunity to comment. I'm a longtime advocate for and past beneficiary of regulations by local and state governments to sustain affordable housing. I benefited in my 20s from rent control and my 40s from the FHA loan program that enabled my husband and I to purchase our home with 2% down. This generation deserves adequate protection suited for this moment. But housing deregulation with no way to protect the community against predatory developers will not produce affordability, but it's opposite. Plexes are not immune to gentrification. Amendment Two does nothing to address this problem, as we all know. I was a first-generation college student, so my parents were not what some would call educated, but neither were they stupid or uninformed. They understood the nimble practices required if government is to help protect the interests of the working class from the unfettered power of market forces. I believe in reasonable regulations that support the common good. I believe that good government used wisely can level the playing field in part by mitigating the excesses of predatory capitalism. I have no quarrel with plexes. I am not anti-plex. I grew up with them. But I do have a problem with ignoring how policies can incentivize real estate speculation funded by venture capitalists and the top 1% in a town that pegs rental rates to the bedroom. Throughout these last truly awful weeks, concerns about the effect of this deregulation on Bloomington's context and market for housing have been dismissed by some out of hand. Even worse, I have heard the concerns of my neighbors for the common good dismissed as exclusionary, selfish, and just tonight, anti-plex. We do need to shift from and mitigate exclusionary uses of zoning laws, but I wish to remind us all that market forces themselves regularly exclude in complex, contextual ways. The market discriminates every day, especially so in our current moment of rampant inequality. Issues with economic and market discrimination are part of why the Center for American Progress does not, in fact, recommend upzoning, but tax set-offs and investments in housing and commercial builds in low income. Exactly, these are the kinds of regulations that should be rational and targeted and open to revision, exactly like those proposed in Amendment Three. So, I support Amendment Three and urge you to do so. I have one final thing to say. This process has been a wasted opportunity for housing change as a shared value. What would it look like if instead of laughing at concerns over market exclusion, as seen even tonight, this process had taken those realities seriously? I do not expect you to take a poll on every issue. I do expect you not to be contemptuous of the community's concerns, but to work instead... of the community's concerns, but to work instead toward processes that consider a range of possible responses. Thank you for your work and I urge you to support Amendment Three, both because it adds necessary guardrails and demonstrates that the exclusions of the market are taken seriously.
I just want to ask, if it's okay, President Sims, to ask the last speaker if there was a second speaker on the screen named Doug Moore.
There was.
But the fact that, the fact that they're not unmuting leads me to believe that they're not.
Okay.
The next speaker is Jared Alexander.
Hi, everyone. I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Jared Alexander. I'm a lifelong resident of Bloomington, a renter, a current student at IU and a member of the city's Commission on Sustainability. To start, I would just like to commend the council on yesterday's unanimous vote in support of Amendment Two. As I said last night, I personally support plexes by right, but I think Amendment Two and conditional use is a reasonable compromise and an important step forward for our community. What we have in Bloomington right now is a housing shortage and a major housing affordability problem. I believe that allowing plexes, whether conditionally or by right, is one of the steps that our city can take in the process of mitigating this crisis. Tonight, I urge the council to reject Amendment Three. It makes zero sense to expensive kind of house, that being the detached, single-family house, can be built anywhere by right, while barriers are placed on adding more affordable, rentable, and ownable housing types like duplexes. City zoning code already contains standards and processes that everyone must follow. And Amendment Two passed yesterday by this council adds even more stipulations. With that in mind, it would seem to me that Amendment Three is merely an undue and unreasonable attempt to prevent any duplexes from being built at all. And therefore, I urge the council to reject it. Thank you and I yield back my time.
Thank you for your comments.
Next, we have Jeff Richardson, who should be able to unmute.
Thank you. My name is Jeff Richardson. I support Amendment Three. Thank you for everyone's thoughtful statements tonight. I have one observation, one comment, and one quote. The observation is I'm troubled with hearing many people saying people not showing up or not writing are likely to be supportive of plexes, or in the case of tonight, to be against Amendment Three. This reminds me of my anti-Vietnam War days when President Nixon dismissed public protests and engagement as the minority of opinion and said he was, in fact, supported by the silent majority. Let's not honor Richard Nixon by resurrecting the silent majority mantra. My comment, I'd like to thank the council members, specifically Sandberg and Rollo, for this amendment. But I want to give special thanks to Councilmember Sims for rolling up his sleeves and working tirelessly over the last two days to make this amendment a real compromise. And so thank you, Council President Sims. And finally, a quote, let's not frame this issue as one between winners and losers or pro versus con. Instead, let's think about how we can work together in these months and years ahead. I'm starting to get choked up about this. Harry Truman said, "It's amazing how much you can accomplish if you don't care who gets the credit." Let's support this reasonable compromise. Let's drop the pro versus con, winners versus losers, and support Amendment Three. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Richardson. Who do we have next, Ms. Lacy?
The next group of speakers will be Jean Simonean, John Lawrence, Carrie Thompson, Andrew Gunther, the person with the screen name Margaret, and Tom Millen. Beginning with Jean Simonean, who should be able to unmute.
Hi, this is Jean Simonean. I believe you have an exhibit to screen share for me?
I do.
This is an exhibit that was already sent to council members. I obviously don't have time to get into the weeds on it. But essentially, what I did is I did a little data compilation from Zillow on three rental properties that are adjacent to my property. They comprise the entire block face and they are adjacent to each other and my property. And we're all in a proposed R4 zone. So these are not cherry-picked properties. And what I did is I correlated their values to specific points in the legislative process on upzoning. I'd like to draw your attention, though, to the blue bar, because that's the big winner property. It's a 970-square-foot rental house. Before August of 2019, when the Plan Commission began hearings on upzoning, its base value was about $169,000. Pretty affordable. Today, its value is $352,000. It has more than doubled in value. This data mirrors, in terms of house value increases, mirrors the results of Yona Freeman's Chicago study and Daniel Coleman's Minneapolis study that not only showed that upzoning increases property values, but that, in fact, the greatest gains were in the least expensive properties, the properties we consider most affordable. This increase in values has at least two effects on the likelihood of conversion for density. First, it frees up capital for renovations. The same way as when your house rises in value, you have more equity, you can leverage that and spend some money on your house. But most importantly for this amendment, it intensifies the pressure in a rental property to utilize the building to its full investment potential. Otherwise, from an investment perspective, it is a waste of capital and wasted capital causes an asset to lose value. Caps are necessary as the most minimal of counterbalances to this pressure. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next, excuse me. Next, we have John Lawrence, who should be able to unmute.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is John Lawrence. I live in the Bryant Park neighborhood and have for almost 35 years. Excuse me. Thank you for your work and hearing my comments tonight. I asked if you support Amendment Three. I have to admit, I'm reluctant to ask this because I believe we should not have gotten to this point. But this amendment now seems necessary. You don't know how this experiment will go, and I don't either. That's why we need caps in a geographic boundary. I'd like to take a step back, though. I'm still mystified why we're here. When this was proposed earlier, topics like affordability and saving the environment popped up as rationales. Proponents have largely given up on the affordability. They've admitted that duplexes, as proposed, will not create affordable housing. Why? Because they will be built by the market and will create market-rate housing that, by and large, will be rented by students at market rate. So we've discounted affordability. What about the environment? Duplexes will most likely be conversions of single-family homes near campus converted to duplexes. It's much cheaper to convert it in an existing house than building new. So you've now taken a single-family dwelling out of the mix and thrown in a duplex. What's the effect? One of the dangers of fighting the suburbs and the drag on the environment that creates. Do students flee to the suburbs? I'm sure a few have, but in general, they want location. Students who can't find a house will move to apartments, which the 2020 plan says we have plenty of. It's one of the reasons we've incentivized downtown apartments the past two decades. What about workforce families? They're not moving to downtown apartments. They're going to move to the suburbs. It's cheaper for them. We've just incentivized families living in the city. They're now going to be driving more. I'm not saying this is going to destroy the environment, but it's certainly not going to save the environment. You may disagree with me, but the truth is that this is a huge experiment. As much as I dislike this experiment, I think that it's important that you place controls so that you can measure what's actually happening rather than guessing. Please add caps and geographic buffers so that we can treat this experiment like an experiment. When we have a better handle on the outcomes, revisit and revise. Please vote for Amendment Three. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Next, we have Carrie Thompson, who should be able to unmute.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to comment this evening. I support Amendment Three, not because it is perfect, but because it may be the best we can get voted in. For those of you speaking to racial and economic diversity, I truly hope that you stay on the call to speak on the affordability amendment, which is forthcoming. The one thing many of us agree on is that our citizens currently left out of the housing market need an opportunity. By limiting the number of market-rate duplexes developed with a target of garnering $6,000 per month per structure rent, we offer the community an opportunity to develop a plan that is truly inclusive. To those who would like to densify in order to reduce carbon emissions, I ask this, do the carbon emissions from our workers now relegated to living in Greene, Lawrence, and Owen Counties count? That is what's currently happening. Commuting to Cook, Catalent, and the university from tens of miles away. These duplexes, without affordability guidelines, will go to students who only are commuting a few miles. If we can't figure out a way to plan for workforce housing, this will continue to be Bloomington's legacy, outpricing our workforce. Let's build a better Bloomington. Let's do that together by thinking through the complexities that exist and developing a comprehensive housing strategy for our community. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Thompson.
Next, we have Andrew Gunther, who should be able to unmute.
Can you hear me?
We hear you. You have about three minutes, Mr. Gunther.
Thank you, Councilmember Sims. Thank you to the council for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Andrew Gunther. I'm an incoming master student in environmental sustainability at the O'Neill School. I'm here this evening to speak against Amendment Three, which sets restrictions on duplexes that I consider to be unreasonable. Namely, the restriction setting the buffer zones around duplexes and banning duplex development within those buffers, as well as capping the number of duplexes per year, will only cause more inequalities in the conditional use process, which is already inherently inequitable. Conditional use already requires home or landowners who wish to convert their property into a duplex to scrape together the resources, namely cash and credit, to seek approval from the city, overcome neighborhood objections, and finally, actually instruct the project. Must seek planning, legal, and construction consultations. They must pay the opportunity costs of going through potentially months of obstacles. Of course, this favors the wealthy among us. However, this amendment exacerbates this problem by requiring that neighbors compete with other neighbors who may or may not be seeking to build duplexes as well. As a result, those homeowners with plenty of cash on hand will have a significant advantage in beating the clock on this issue, meaning only the wealthiest of the wealthy will be able to confidently redevelop their properties into a duplex. Members of the public and council members, including the sponsors of this amendment, have raised concerns about large, out-of-town developers with deep pockets buying up properties to flip into duplexes. They claim that homeowners will be going up against these big-time developers and will lose as a result of not having enough resource. However, I cannot understand why these same members of the public and council members cannot see that placing a buffer and cap on duplexes built will pit those same homeowners they are so worried for against the developers they are so scared of, eliminating any chance for local families and small-time developers to participate in this process. Families who may wish to build a duplex, live in one half, and rent out the other half to pay their mortgage will find themselves up against the deepest pockets in our community, as well as those of out-of-town developers. And if they can't pony up the money necessary before a multimillion-dollar development firm, they're either out of luck for two years if their property is within 150 feet of another duplex, or they will have to wait in for another shot next year if 15 duplexes are approved before their own. This amendment will only it eliminates any affordability or equity benefits that come from building additional housing units via duplexes. It favors the wealthiest among us over all else. It also restricts the impact of duplexes on our community's housing prices, so much so that it is a blatant signal from sponsors that they either not believe that increasing housing supply is necessary, or they do not care about the potential impact this may have on affordability. This two amendment is rotten and three unequivocally. Thank you and I yield my time.
Thank you for your comments.
Next, we have the person with the screen name Margaret, who should be able to unmute and state their full name.
Hello, this is Margaret Clements. I want to, I support Amendment Three. It inserts necessary guardrails into this despairable, despairing process. And I would also like to thank you for allowing me to speak on television's most riveting reality television show, the Bloomington City Council. It is so riveting because we cannot really believe our ears. I would like to tell you briefly about a story of a similar experiment that happened in South Bend in my youth. In the era of new urbanism that Jim Rosenbarger described earlier, earlier in the early 1970s, Mayor Jerry Miller in South Bend had this vision for our downtown, our city of South Bend. And he wanted a big mall in our downtown. And so he came in and he got a TIF and he basically steamrolled over our precious downtown. We had a wonderful theater that was community pride. We had a wonderful Philadelphia cafe that people speak of today because it was a beloved asset of our city. There were other really beautiful buildings that were steamrolled. And he did this because he thought he had a buyer. He thought the associates was going to build the big mall in downtown South Bend. And, and so he proceeded to make way for the associates. Well, he didn't pin down all the details, all the necessary details, and the associates moved to Dallas, Texas, leaving us with a hole in the center of our downtown instead of our precious community resources. And so I say, this amendment, this amendment is really important to insert guardrails into an unknown experiment with unknown results. We don't really even know the parameters of why this, these plexes are being requested in every town, every area equally throughout our city. We don't know the ramifications that it will have in various neighborhoods. We really do need at least these guardrails. And we really need to put a ring in that three-ring binder. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Next, we have Tom Millen, who should be able to unmute.
Yes, my name's Tom Millen. I live in Bryant Park neighborhood. And I'm supportive of Amendment Three. It is a way to observe an experiment that I think will go awry. And having three, the Amendment Three will be a way to keep those uncontrolled growth and destruction of the core neighborhoods in check. So I thank the councilman Rollo and Sandberg for authoring it and hope you all vote for Amendment Three. That's all.
Thank you. Who do we have next, Ms. Lacy?
The next group is the screen name Daniel Bingham, but I believe that's Teal Bingham, that followed by AJ Ruff at IU.edu, followed by R A S T H N E I at Indiana, followed by Gail Schreiber Weaver, followed by Steve Akers. We'll begin with who I believe is Teal Bingham. You should be able to unmute.
Yes, this is Teal Bingham. I live in the Waterman neighborhood. I'd like to start by pointing out the fact that discussing that policies and systems are rooted in racism and result in segregation is not calling individual homeowners racist. It's also not calling the opponents of density racist either, or the opponents of upzoning. It's important that we step back from our anecdotal perspectives and look at the effects that zoning has on our broader community. It's not council's job to answer to individual residents, but to serve the community as a whole. Additionally, while of course, not all people of color are in poverty, as a group, people of color are disproportionately advantaged. And that is a result of policies that were at times deliberately, and sometimes not, created and causing these effects. By looking at how zoning has affected communities across the board, we can move forward with positive change to improve accessibility and increase opportunity. and increase opportunities for more community members and neighbors to benefit from the resources and proximity of our core. Density will also benefit the climate by allowing more people to choose not to drive or to be able to drive shorter distances, not to mention allowing opportunity for those who can't drive or don't have access to a car. Increasing duplexes will increase the amount of housing available, which does make housing more affordable and accessible. And making them rare only serves to make them more valuable and therefore more expensive. Adding more restrictions to Plexes now will stifle the undoing of harms that are currently perpetuated by not individual hosties. Many people in Bloomington who want to live in the core don't have a choice to live in a duplex and live in single-family homes, including those who support upzoning and those who don't. I ask you to vote no on this amendment to allow for more positive change and more community members to benefit from our city. I also worry greatly that specifically the 150-foot buffer will make it more difficult for homeowners to alter their own homes for their own benefit and to allow more families to live in their neighborhoods by making it more beneficial for developers and restricting owner-occupied duplexes. Thank you.
Thank you.